Good morning, welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. Would a clerk please take the role?
Mr. Charlin?
Here.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, present?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. All rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation in regard, indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda, is there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next order of business is proclamations, and Councilwoman Gross?
Hi, everybody. Is everybody here for Fair Housing Month? Want to come up to the front? Thank you. This is our annual proclamation. We're very proud of the work that Pittsburgh does around fair housing. We're matching today. We didn't plan it. But we have opposite shoes and shirts. I have the white shoes. Great. So again, we're so grateful for all the work that all of our Fair Housing Coalition does in order to protect housing rights in the city of Pittsburgh, and it's been a multi-decade effort, and I'll read the proclamation to give you more background. Whereas, "April 11th, 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which as amended pronounces a national policy mandating fair housing opportunities for all citizens regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status. And whereas on December 16th, 1958, Mayor David Lawrence signed the Fair Housing Practices Ordinance into effect, which as amended additionally prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of ancestry, gender identity, gender expression, place of birth, sexual orientation, status as a survivor of domestic violence, citizenship or immigration status, preferred language or hairstyle. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, whether subtle or blatant, diminish the rights of all and violate our community's shared and deeply held values of equality and dignity for all. Whereas the city through its mayor, council, commissions, departments, and authorities still works toward achieving the recommendations of the affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Task Force and ending housing inequity for its citizens. Whereas the international community in 2022 and 2023 issued recommendations to public officials in the U.S. calling for improved efforts to address the systemic discrimination that perpetuates poverty and homelessness and disproportionately harms racialized and other vulnerable populations. Whereas the city through its mayor and council reaffirm the commitment to ensuring housing as a human right through its policy implementation and enforcement. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the city of Pittsburgh to abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law in the pursuit of expanding opportunities and improving the quality of life for all. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh commits to make every effort to support the citizens of Pittsburgh and the departments, boards, offices, and authorities of the city of Pittsburgh in their fight to end discrimination in housing and affirmatively further fair housing. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Pittsburgh."
Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
To move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do we have speakers? That's what you're here for, and I will formally present this proclamation to you. And please make sure you're...
Thank you all so much. So I am happy to have with me some of the members of the Commission on Human Relations here today. We have our Deputy Director, Chris Salt, Senior Investigator Rita Porterfield, Senior Investigator Shanice Murray, and soon-to-be Senior Investigator Lauren Law. And also with us is Jackie Smith of the Human Rights City Alliance, but I'll let her speak to you momentarily. Thank you so much for the members of council for sponsoring this proclamation year after year for us so that we can highlight fair housing. My name is Rachel Shepard. I am the Executive Director of the Commission on Human Relations. For anyone who might be unfamiliar, the Commission is the official civil rights enforcement agency for the city of Pittsburgh. And as the only fair housing assistance program in the state of Pennsylvania, we work with the Department of Housing and Urban Development to investigate housing discrimination complaints. We know that the housing discrimination complaints that we receive are only the tip of the iceberg, and that often they're only an afterthought after housing stability and affordability. The inequity that contributes to the latter is deep-seated in policy that the Commission and other partnering organizations are working hard to reverse. We thank our partners at the URA, Just Mediation Pittsburgh, the Housing Justice Table, members of the Eviction Prevention Cohort, and so many others for stepping up to support the people of Pittsburgh in their housing. The goal is to find a path forward where there can be equal housing choice for all. Fair housing is a human right, and we all deserve the opportunity to have equal opportunity to live and thrive in the city of Pittsburgh. We are not interested in maintaining the status quo, but creating an environment that people are proud to call home. In addition to investigating discrimination complaints and enforcing civil rights laws, the Commission's mission is to decrease unfair treatment and promote understanding within the community by providing education and outreach. For the housing providers of Pittsburgh, we encourage you to reach out to us as a resource. We often provide regular trainings for housing providers, landlords, property managers on fair housing practices and laws with the Fair Housing Partnership, the Fair Housing Initiatives Program for the city of Pittsburgh. And we're always willing to review policies and any kind of practices that you might be working on to ensure that you are offering fair and equitable housing opportunity. For our Pittsburghers, we encourage you to reach out if you're experiencing any kind of unfair treatment in your housing, whether that's in the search for housing or in housing that you are already a part of. This also includes folks who are looking to purchase a home and are experiencing any kind of lending or appraisal discrimination. I'd like to end with highlighting our fair housing event that's happening on this Saturday. I'm going to have Jackie Smith come up to speak more about it, but it is the first of many fair housing events we hope to have, and this is the Pittsburgh People's Assembly for Fair and Equitable Housing, which will focus on tenants' rights and taking action to further advocate for themselves in the housing market.
Thank you for supporting this proclamation and for your attention to Fair Housing Month this month and beyond. My name is Jackie Smith, and I work with the Pittsburgh Human Rights City Alliance. And as Rachel noted, we're working together with the Commission to help further fair housing by helping organize our communities, to advocate for their rights, and to help build support for our council members to take more progressive action to further affordable housing and to really be creative in advancing new solutions to the affordable housing crisis. Our event on Saturday is meant to help organize and build our movements to support this work, so we look forward to working more with you around some creative ideas that our movements are generating around building non-market, permanently affordable housing, that is the housing we need to really achieve equity in our city. And this is part of a bigger project that the Human Rights City Alliance supports, along with the Housing Justice Table, of building a city where everyone can enjoy their full array of human rights and live in dignity and know that they're not going to be evicted from our city. And so that's our goal. I hope to see you on Saturday, and it'll be a great way to meet a lot of the networks that are part of our growing Housing Justice Table, which you'll be becoming more familiar with if you're not already, as we grow and build the energies around this demands, growing demands for housing justice and fair housing. So thanks for supporting this proclamation and for the further work that you'll do to carry it forward.
I just want to ask the Clerk's office, I believe Councilwoman Strasburger, you were supposed to be a cosponsor, and it doesn't read that way, so my apologies. I was just sidebar-ing and asking. Is it possible for us to correct the record, to add Councilwoman Strasburger? And Councilwoman, do you want to make some comments? Want to come up? Are you sure? Why don't we have all members up for the vote, if you don't mind?
Councilwoman Smith, is the 412 Thrive being presented or just ran to the record? I thought it was being read into the record.
Which did they? Lori said it's just being read in.
So we have two to be read in, one from Councilman Mosley, and then one from myself and Councilwoman Smith.
Councilman Mosley presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 5th, 2024 to be boom concept days in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Lavelle and Councilwoman Kale Smith present. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize 412 Thrive and commend them for their service to breast cancer patients and survivors. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 12th, 2024 to be 412 Thrive Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamations have been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Sover. I'm going to read from the Rules of Council on Public Comment, in an email sent to the Clerk, 8 April 2024. From the Pittsburgh City Council Rules of Council, ROC, three meetings, four public attendance, A, open meetings, C, public comment, two. Quote, "Comments by citizens are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before council. Concern is vague. No definition is offered. No criteria of limitation are specified. Concern as it now exists in ROC is completely open-ended, signified by the open categorization, quote, 'matters of concern which may be before council. Without further specification via act of council, any subject may possibly be a concern.' Therefore, one, a determination by any council meeting presider that a subject of a citizen public comment is not a concern of council is arbitrary. Two, any threat, attempt, or act of interference of a PC speaker such as microphone cut, not in the rules of council, based on the arbitrary determination by the presider that the subject is not a concern of council, is invalid, unethical, and is in violation of the guarantees to freedom of speech in the PA Constitution and the U.S. Constitution. The action by Presider R. Daniel Lavelle to April 2024 at the regular meeting of City Council claiming that the PC of Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller was not a concern of council is consistent with one and two, censorship of citizen speech. This email is being transmitted citywide. This email will be transmitted to civil rights enforcement entities within the Pennsylvania State Government and U.S. federal government for investigation. This email is added to the existing dossier of acts by Pittsburgh Council in civil rights litigation concerning Pittsburgh Council's supervision of citizen public comments generally and of public comments by RLM specifically. Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, founder, Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, 1999. The PA Corporation entity number is 2831602. Global Intelligence Society, founder, 2010. The GIS, Global Intelligence Society, candidate for President of the United States, 2024. The main CGSI module is on 40 Bell Sover Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA, 15210 USA, 412-969-7997."
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will also begin three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I am really concerned about the speakers when they stand up and speak, and you city council members are supposed to be up there, and you're back here talking. And when the man says something, then you police jump up and you want to intimidate them by standing there. Oh, yes, you do. When you stand up, because you intimidate me. You intimidate me a lot of times. What I'm saying is this, you are getting $80,000 a year, which I didn't think you deserved, because most of you don't even come twice a week. You won't come twice a week, but you think you deserve $80,000 a year to sit and talk and talk amongst yourself. You got your phones, they use your tablets. The one lady that works over in Burger King, I went to go to get something at Burger King, and she handed me the food, but anyway, she remembered me. And so she said, "I see you on City Council." And she said, "And you know that Lavelle?" She said, "He's all the time on his machine." Ha ha. I see it. I see it all the time. And Ms. Gross, because you had all that education and you studied the PhD, you had to do a lot of writing and typing. And you sit there, she sits there, and she's looking, but when she ain't running her mouth, she's using that machine right down there. They need to leave their phones and their tablets and their computers back in the office. If you have something that's an emergency, you got a worker back there to come and tell you. See, listen, let me tell you something. I am tired of coming, and I've been praying and praying because I need to come. You don't know what's happening in our community. We die, and you make the rules. We should be able to come down and tell you what's wrong in my community. When I tried to tell you up on Bedford, you had a sign that was across the thing. If I didn't have my cane, I would have ran, because my sight is not real good. I'm telling you, I say there's one sign, they took and put another one. Whereas if a black blind man, if he had walked, he would have hit this way and went over there and chopped his head off. He told me, Ms. Brown, I walked down Bedford. I said, "Never again," because they put the signs. I called 911. I asked for a number, and they didn't give me that. But I've been calling, and they won't take and send the information like they should. I'm telling you, you can be better council people. I don't think you really mean to be as evil with some of the things you do, but you don't know. And what you don't know, someone got to tell you. I am 77 years old. I've been coming down here over 20 something years. I come because I don't want people to have to notice what I did. My son was died because five white cops in Bell Sover... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Please, you just have a nice day, but think about what I'm saying. I'm not just coming down here to fuck you. I'm...
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bernadette. I'm from Beachview. I want to thank, really thank, Mr. Coghill and Domi for the ADA Crosswalks being upgraded in Beachview. Beautiful, one by one, as they're getting completed. My body thanks you, my spine thanks you, trying to get around there. I have stopped personally to the crews and thanked them. I could bring them cookies, but you don't want me to bake. I'd probably get arrested. I also need to thank 911 for figuring out how to calm this old granny down. I bought a bow saw, a big one, and I was like, "I can prune that tree." Well, first one worked out good, second one worked out good, but the third trunk, it didn't go where I thought it should go. So in a panic, I called 911, and they said, "Well, they can't cut your tree down." I said, "I know they can't cut my tree down." I said, "I don't know what to do." So I'm thinking in my mind, the fire trucks with the ladders, they don't have them anymore. So they all stood around, and we looked at it, and I already had it tied up. And of course, in a panic, I called the proverbial, sorry, Ed Gany, Mr. Coghill, the mayor of Beachview. And they said, "Wait for Mr. Coghill." He came by after, after the firemen left. The beautiful little Latino family across the street came over, they saw a need, and they climbed the tree, they cut it, they cut it into small little 12-inch to 24-inch pieces, cleaned it all up for me. And by the time Anthony got there, he made sure he went over and he thanked those kids. I was so proud. I felt very stupid. Don't give an old lady a bow saw. The OCD kicks in. I did go to the firehouse, and I did thank them personally. They were all curious, the ones that didn't come. Yes, tell us about that. We were reading that call. But so the tree branch is away from the cable wires, and all is good. And again, thank you. I can't wait to see my little artistic plan at the top of coast get done, little by little. It's getting done. And I'm sorry for all the negativity that's coming up from it, for people who don't know how to make a 90-degree turn, let them know that their street probably has a 90-degree turn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine here. First of all, I'd like to return a sender, any spellwork sent towards me in these chambers 900 trillion times. Here's a prayer. Lord, thank you for being the source of everything I need. Teach me to trust in your perfect provision. Today I want to talk about how to develop a restoration mentality. A promise from God today comes from Joel, Chapter 2, verses 25 through 26. It says, "I will restore the years that the locust has eaten, and I will bring you out with plenty, and you shall be satisfied." Proverbs, the book of wisdom from God, 21:21, talks about being prosperous. Whoever pursues righteousness and love finds life, prosperity, and honor. There is no honor in being a thief. There's some thieves in here that have stolen from me, and they think that I'll never know. No one will ever find out. God knows what you've taken, and he's handling the situation. Proverbs 22, verse 16, says, "A person who gets ahead by oppressing the poor or by showering gifts on the rich will end in poverty." Come out here in the street with us. Your time's coming. Tick tock, tick tock.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Jacob Poole. Previous name is Zoltan Jolt Levante Jakob. I'm from Eastern Europe originally, and I'm here to speak about child trafficking in the Pittsburgh and Greater Pittsburgh area. I'm a survivor of child trafficking, and it is, a lot of that is going on in the Pittsburgh area. And I have given out 50,000 flyers raising awareness of this because I was part of a child shipment being prepared from Eastern Europe in the 80s and 90s, after the governments had destabilized in Hungary, Romania, Czechoslovakia, Yugoslavia. Opportunistic slave traders literally gathered up children for us, hundreds and thousands in a facility, and prepared us for shipment to the Greater Pittsburgh area, using the Pittsburgh Heinz Child Charity Organization connected with the Ligonier Bethlehem Organization, using churches and things like that. They literally gathered us up, disconnected us from our families, and prepared us as a shipment of farm animals to be brought here, and that's why I am. I've been passed through the University of Pittsburgh, Carnegie Mellon areas, National Energy Lab, Giant Eagle, PNC Bank. The entire time, I'm alone, isolated, held captive. I have surgical scars all over my body, I have no medical records for them, have strange medical issues, zero human contact, no friends, no family, being passed from one slave side to the other. And I see thousands and thousands of people like me in the Greater Pittsburgh area. No voice for them. Child trafficking, in the last 30, 40 years, probably 50,000 of us are in the Greater Pittsburgh area, spread out, unable to say a single word, be in forced labor conditions. And that's my every single day. Every single day, I'm isolated, blocked, my phone doesn't work properly, my social media is blocked, my email is blocked. I have probably 3,000 jobs, nothing works, except when slave traders and slave side operators show up at my doorstep, and they say, "I'll give you a job." And it's a slave job. I have doctor degrees, I have all those things. I can't get proper employment. I can only get all these slave sites in the Pittsburgh area, and that's how it works. Every single job I had, even a PhD, was a place was designed for forced labor, exploitation. I have no hope I'm going to die. I literally bought and sold this child to be brought here for exploitation with the name Zoltan Jolt Levante Jakob, bringing Eastern European names into the mixture for publicity and diversity and whatever people do with those kind of things. I don't know how it works, but I was with hundreds of kids in a kennel, like a dog kennel, in a farm animal kennel, being prepared for shipment, and that's how I was brought here. That's how I exist. And I have no hope for a regular life. I have the same expectation as a slave in the 1800s. And every detail of my life thus far here has been nothing but that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move to presentation of papers. Excuse me. Beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Charlin presents Bill Number 342, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the two... the two thousand and twenty-four Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Bill Three Forty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Seventy-two of two thousand and sixteen, effective January one, two thousand and seventeen, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Seventeen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen through Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Improvement Program by reducing Southside Slopes Neighborhood Association by five thousand dollars and increasing Rocher Association by five thousand dollars and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill Three Forty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of two thousand and nineteen, effective January one, two thousand and twenty, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty through Two Thousand and Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program by reducing Pittsburgh Action Against Rape by five thousand dollars and increasing Southside Slopes Neighborhood Association by five thousand dollars and authorize subsequent agreements. And Bill Number Three Forty-five, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article One Administration, Chapter Two Nineteen Operating Budget by revising Section Two Nineteen oh three Collaborative Budgeting Process to require the City Controller to certify revenues and expenditures for five years rather than one.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin, I have listed, um, two requests to waive Rule Eight on Bill Three Forty-three and Three Forty-four.
Yes, please.
Motion to waive the rules. There are seconds?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills Three Forty-three and Three Forty-four will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you. Uh, that takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Mr. President. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Three Forty-six, Resolution Amending Resolution Seven Sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, which authorizes additional funding for maintenance services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Station by authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to extend the agreement with Opex Corporation for maintenance services and associated software licenses for one year and increase the authorized spend by twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for a new total not to exceed amount of one hundred six thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Three Forty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-two that authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Pittsburgh Regional Transit Allegheny County and the Urban Redevelopment Authority concerning the Bus Rapid Transit Project in order to increase funding for BRT project staffing contributed to the city from Pittsburgh Regional Trac, Transit by three hundred, seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number Three Forty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-four, zero-two-nine-one, requiring a council vote on the intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and County of Allegheny, Pittsburgh Public School District, and Pittsburgh Land Bank for the shared operation and administration of the Pittsburgh Land Bank.
Councilwoman Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council, waive, make a motion for Rule Eight, waive Rule Eight. Haven't done that in a while. Motion to waive Rule Eight.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill Three Forty-eight will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Thank you.
That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Three Forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Office of the Mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements with Precision Infrastructure Management to provide professional services related to the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan at a cost not to exceed six hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars over two years. Bill Three Fifty, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gannett Fleming, Inc., for Expert Witness Services in Connection with Two Matters Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed Sixteen Thousand, Eight Hundred and Ninety Dollars and Seventy-One Cent Over One Year.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Three Fifty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Airspace Leasing, Ownership, and Maintenance Obligations of a Bicycle Facility on East Ohio Street between Madison Avenue and Chestnut Street. This resolution serves to authorize only the agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. And Bill Three Fifty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution Four Sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to execute an agreement with the Pennsylvania Resource Council in order to continue providing electronic waste collection and recycling services for city residents by extending PRC services for an additional one year and increasing the authorized spend by one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a new total spend amount not to exceed three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Three Fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh between the city of Pittsburgh and Janelle Young for the installation and maintenance of a mural at the Arch Street Basketball Court.
Thank you. On behalf of myself, I have five bills. If we could begin with the two communications.
Council President LaValle presents Bill Number Three Fifty-four, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation from the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy to the Department of Parks and Recreation of Equipment Used During a Tree Planting Event Valued at two thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cent. And Bill Number Three Fifty-five, Communication from Sushila Numanis Thanger, Executive Director of the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, Submitting the Affordable Housing Bond Spending Plan Dated April two thousand and twenty-four.
If we may have a motion to re-receiving foul on both bills?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills will be filed away. Now, if we could take the first appointment of Dr. Bay?
Bill Number Three Fifty-six, Resolution Appointing Jamil Bay as the Director of the Department of Planning of the city of Pittsburgh.
What is members' pleasure to re, to re-receiving foul or to interview?
I would like to interview, please. Hold for interview. Motion to hold for interview.
Again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll work with the clerk to get those interviewed.
Can I just ask that we maybe make it a, a day separate because I think that deserves a longer time other than a half an hour before council? Thank you.
Certainly. And then if we could read Bill Three Fifty-seven and Three Fifty-eight?
And Bill Three Fifty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Six Ninety-six of two thousand and twenty-one, Appointing Jerome Jackson as a Member of the Housing Authority Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. And Bill Three Fifty-eight, Resolution Appointing Ellie Fisher as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
What is your pleasure, either to hold to interview or to approve?
Well, if we make a motion to interview, could we do them both on the same day, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, motion to hold for interview.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bill, both bills will be held for an interview.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. That takes us to unfinished business. We have one appointment.
Unfinished Business, Bill Two Eighty-two, Resolution Appointing Tamara Dedukovich as a Member of the Land Bank Board of Directors, Replacing Douglas Anderson with a Term to Expire January one, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Her appointment has been approved. That takes us to reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Three Thirty-seven, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for April third, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Three Oh One, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Budget, the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Community Development Program, and the Two Thousand and Twenty-four through Two Thousand and Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by increasing PJ McCartel Roadway Bridge over Hillside Tip by seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, increasing PJ McCartel Roadway Bridge over Sycamore Tip by six hundred thousand dollars, increasing Bloomfield Bridge Tip by one million, two hundred thousand dollars, and increasing East Sycamore Street Bridge Tip by six hundred thousand dollars to account for Federal Highway Administration Funding being received at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Bill Three Eleven, Resolution Transferring the Amount of Ten Thousand Dollars Within the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Operating Budget from City Council Salaries and Wages Regular to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. LaValle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills haven't received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, Presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Three Thirty-eight, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for April third, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Three Oh Two, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the PJ McCartel Roadway Bridge over Sycamore Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Six Hundred Thousand Dollars, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Three Oh Three, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the PJ McCartel Roadway Bridge over Hillside Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Seven Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Three Oh Four, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the East Sycamore Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Six Hundred Thousand Dollars, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Three Oh Five, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Bloomfield Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed One Million, Two Hundred Thousand Dollars, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. And Bill Three Oh Six, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the City Steps Project and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Eight Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars, reimbursable at eighty percent, and a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the city of Pittsburgh not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. LaValle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills haven't received a legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Three Forty, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April third, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill One Sixty-nine, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, That Certain Structure Known as Sal's Barber Shop, Located at seven twelve Brookline Boulevard in Brookline in nineteenth Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city. Bill Three Oh Seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Seven Eleven of two thousand and twenty-two, Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Sixty-seven of two thousand and eighteen, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter into an Amended Agreement or Agreements with Dapolonia for On-Call Emergency Geotechnical Services, Including Assessments, Evaluations, Land Remediation Plans, and Expert Testimony of Properties Subject to Active Life Safety Code Enforcement Violations by Increasing the Approved Amount by twenty thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand dollars over three years. Bill Three Twenty-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program to Remove Pittsburgh Contingency as a Grant Recipient and Add Birmingham Foundation as a Grant Recipient along with Voices Against Violence and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement for a Total Cost of ten thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
I just want to say that I'm going to vote no on Bill Zero One Six Nine. I want to be supportive of, uh, I'm sorry, is that the one I want? No, that's not the one I want.
You mean Bill Three Twenty-two?
Three Twenty-two. Is that the one with Councilman, uh, Charlin?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Zero Three Two Two, not South's Bar, Zero Three Two Two.
Yeah, she's going against me.
I just, no, no. I want to say I would support Councilman Charlin and everything he's trying to do to get funding into his district, but our name, our district was told that they cannot use conduits, and I think at this point that they're going to have some legal recourse once these pass. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye on all bills and no on Bill Zero Three Two Two.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. LaValle President?
Aye.
On Bills One Sixty-nine and Three Oh Seven, nine ayes, and on Bill Three Twenty-two, eight ayes, one no.
The bills haven't received a legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Kahari Mosley, Presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Three Forty-one, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for April third, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Two Ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to execute instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants in favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to allow the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority operation and maintenance responsibilities of green infrastructure within certain property along the Bus Rapid Transit Project Corridor. And Bill Two Ninety-eight, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the North Avenue Signals and Safety Project where PWSA would be responsible for paying one hundred percent
one hundred percent of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements.
The bills haven't received a legally required numbers of votes. It, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Now the bills have received a legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to, um, call for an executive session, um, to revisit, um, one sixty-one, uh, two B, to see whether it's from twenty twenty when we changed, um, the way we do some work here. And I'd just like to make sure that we have a conversation between council members. Um, and we had an executive session, you know, previously about it, but I just want to revisit it because now we're having so many budget issues. I think it's time for us to, council to do what we need to do to be responsible for the budget. Thank you. And this is part of it.
There a second?
And can I just also say, I'm also glad that Councilwoman Strasburger is going to be working towards, um, hopefully some more work in the, in that regard, but right now I think this is our responsibility. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Executive session, we'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. Anything else? If not, under meeting announcements, this afternoon at one PM, council will hold an executive session on Bill three fifty relative to litigation matters. And tomorrow, Wednesday, April tenth, at nine thirty AM, council will hold a pre-agenda interview with Kirk Berkeley and Tammy Thompson as members of the Land Bank Board of Directors. And at ten AM, council will hold our regular standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close tomorrow at nine AM. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty one, thirty-eight. And lastly, tomorrow afternoon at one thirty, council will hold a Hibercast public hearing on Bill fifty-nine, zoning code change to single unit. Speaker registration closes at eleven thirty AM the day of the meeting. With that, all are present, so we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.